...and I would ask you all to stand for the flag, and I will leave. My flag is a flag to the United States of America, to the public of which we stand, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Our first order of business this evening is the issuance of a proclamation to a longtime public servant here in the village of Webster, who has served on the zoning board for at least 25 years. So I would like to invite Bill Baker come to the podium.
Board?
Yes, the board's here.
Welcome to it. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
We go back quite a ways, most recently in terms of his participation on the zoning board, but also we've had some rides that went out to Pretavia for some of the meetings that have taken place out there. Had the honor of going out with him. And actually, we go back to 1981 when his son swam on my varsity swim team. I don't know if you brought that up, but I certainly remember that.
So do I.
Well, it is my honor to make this proclamation for service to the village of Webster. And whereas it is in the interest and desire of the village of Webster Board of Trustees to recognize residents who have given of themselves and their time in service to the village of Webster community, and whereas Bill Baker has been an invaluable member of the village of Webster zoning board of appeals for 26 years, and would on occasion step in as chairperson as needed, and whereas Bill has been known as the board's expert in seeker motions. I remember those. And whereas. And whereas his understanding and thoughtful contributions and dedication have been of the greatest value to the board and the village of Webster community. And therefore, let it be known that we, Mayor Darryl Byers and the village board of trustees on behalf of the village of Webster wish to send a heartfelt thanks to you. We hereby recognize Bill Baker for his many years of dedicated service to the community on the Webster zoning board of appeals and in this village of Webster community. Congratulations, Bill. Thank you for your service. And this is for you, sir. You're very welcome. Do you want to?
What do you think, Rob? Should he give a speech?
Speech? Seeker. Based on my determination of a good retirement age. For me, I guess at this point, I believe I've passed that age. So I think it's time to fade off into the sunset. Not too far away, but I'll come back and check on you from now on again. But I enjoyed all my years on the zoning board. We had lots of good times, not too many problems that I can remember. And I enjoyed working with all the people I met on the board. And I will try to stay in touch with you. But I think when I get to the point where I need someone to drive me to the meeting, it's time to say goodbye. And that's basically where I am. So that was a big part of my decision. Didn't want to have to depend on anybody else to have to get me to the meeting. So it's time. But we've got a lot of good people on the board, so you're in good hands. Thank you again.
Okay, at this time, it's 7:06. So at this time, we are going to open the floor for discussion or comment on the proposed local law number five of 2022, which is, quote, "to amend the solid waste chapter of the code of the village of Webster." This article is to clarify and amend the code of the village of Webster as it relates to the collection of refuges. And there are a number of amendments that are in this proposed local law number five. There are also several amendments in terms of eliminating a couple of the chapters, one of them specifically 2713, curb pickup being replaced by what is in the proposed law. Another one is the elimination of 2714B, which deals with the collector and picking up of a maximum of six receptacles, which is again in the proposed law. And also the elimination of 12714C in its entirety with the replacement of collectors shall pick up construction, demolition materials, et cetera. So at this particular time, I would open the floor to anyone who would like to speak to this proposed local law change. Yes, sir?
My name is William Rudolph, 46 Orchard Street, Village of Webster. First, I knew about this law. Not that I care. I should care, but I wondered. My question, I just heard this right now. I didn't even know you were amending it. I would ask if you had required or asked the local haulers to come in and talk about what you're trying to do here.
You're asking if I have asked local haulers?
The town, the village board, yeah.
I don't believe that the village board can. Jake, I would refer this man to you, whether you have conversation with him.
I have not. I guess the Cliff Notes version of what this local law does is clarify the brush. As far as the way the wording is about brush pickup that's in the local law. We changed a few things, like 1274 curb pickup. It amends the second sentence to change it from 90 gallons to 96 gallon toders because that's just to reflect reality because we were changing other things. And then it clarifies what the expectations or requirements are for putting where there's boxes or toders and garbage going out of sidewalks where there is no frelon area. So if it's in the main street area in the central business district, if you walk, you know, 6 o'clock, I think it's in here, 6 o'clock the night before.
Right, 5:00, 6:00.
Yeah, and it's got to be, they have to be removed by 6:00 p.m. on the day of pickup so that we don't have toiders sitting out there for three or four days. So there's nothing really that's going to impact them. The six receptacles is in the existing code. And I think that that went, we went back and forth on that when we were drafting this. And that goes, went both ways. It gives you, it's up to six receptacles or a toder. It's not saying you have to pick up six toders. But it gives an expectation to both parties that, you know, if you put a couple of extra bags there or something, that they'll pick it up. But you also can't put 15 things out there and expect someone to come get it. So it gives a limit both ways, depending if you're the collector or the depositor, I guess it would be. So, yeah. So it didn't really impact anything that they would do in their operations. They just clarified things that are in there. And I think the last one, too, was just clarifying the construction waste. We wanted to clarify that, you know, they can pick up construction debris, but it's not if you have a contractor come, you can't put that in your toder. And that's consistent, I think, with what most of the rules are. If you're going to do something on your own and it fits in a toder, you can put it out there or you can get one of those bagsters or whatever they're called. Otherwise, the contractor, you know, he can't do a roof tear off and put it in your toder for the next year and a half.
Like I started this conversation, I'm not involved in this, but it's my thinking that knowing the history of this business, and in the past, haulers were invited to come and sit down at a workshop or some informal gathering at a conference table to at least listen to concerns of the village. Those concerns came from the populace and the repercussions thereof on their business because they're the ones who bear the brunt of all this. The people may put up with a little inconvenience like snow stars or something like this. But the hauler, he's there every week. He's usually on time. And he's really more reliable than a postman because if you don't get your mail or it's stuck in the post office, you don't have much to say about it. But if the hauler doesn't show up, you're on the phone right away. And it's not a very enviable business in terms of public relations. So once again, are you going to vote on this tonight?
No.
Oh.
Oh, no.
Well, for what it's worth, why don't you ask him to come in and sit down with somebody? Even Jake, somebody that would know how to talk to them.
In reading this, Bill, I would say that what primarily is in here is more towards the resident. You know, it's like in terms of in the village restricting when they can put their cans out on the street for pickup. Several times recently, they've been out for days. And so we're just trying to clarify when they can be out, like in the village. And to, a lot of this doesn't really apply to the hauler themselves. It applies more to the resident in terms of, you know, what can be placed out there for collection.
Okay. I apologize for my ignorance. I had no idea this was on the table. Thank you for letting me put my two cents in there.
What's that here? Who are you saying?
I'd like to speak again if other people want to get up first.
Any other comments regarding the proposed law?
Also, I think that it's going to make it a little bit easier for the hauler, too, because the loads would be lighter and, you know, we don't have to digest tree stumps and all that stuff. The village of these, lots of this, up to this point. If someone's not following this and the waste company is picking it up every week and then all of a sudden you yell out, "You're not supposed to do that." I've been doing it first. They have, you know, so there probably should be some sort of conversation. Yeah, there's a couple that I met, too, that pick anything up pretty much.
Yeah, this was clarification of existing practices and things. And then we added one thing about it's unlawful to place television's computer monitors and similar items for the curb for pickup because no one picks them up. So rather than leave them out there and have us hit them with a plow, hang, don't put them out there and we can see them. Because before, we can't really, we could try to, you know, stretch and say, okay, well, there's accumulation of garbage or something on your property. And this makes it very clear so then we can go back and say, hey, you know, don't leave that out there because no one's going to pick it up. And the, you know, garbage, I think one of the big things is there's a lot of pressure by people calling about garbage cans on the sidewalk for three, four days in a row. So, and it was, you know, from here to the kitchen lawn. That was something we just want to clarify what that was. And then most of it's, rather than limiting, it's, you know, it allows breakfast. It just explains out of what about taking advantage of that service with the benefit, you know, eight years, I put your Christmas trees out. Here's how you put the brush out and just kind of clarify, here's how to put leaves out. Those are all things that we already do, and that's just for the resident, really. Just saying, hey, here's how to do it.
Now we're starting to see toders in the roads. Have you noticed that?
No, I watch.
That on the tree lawn, actually out in the road.
Well, I think, yeah, sometimes I think when there's, when there's snow, people try to get it close for the haulers so they don't have to come back up and get it. They have a lot of narrow driveways, so since they put it in their driveway, they can't back out. So, but they're not there when we have to plow.
Okay, well, if there are no other comments, then I will close the public hearing. And.
It's a public hearing. We're closing that first.
And at this time, I would like to invite Matt Chatfield, who has an update on the Xerox Roadways project.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Matt.
Matt. So as you recall, in early February, the board approved hiring a consultant at a fee of just over $12,000 to update cost estimates towards the improvement of roadways that currently are private and belongs to Xerox Corporation, which could potentially be then dedicated upon their rehabilitation to the village. The cost estimates were updated from the ones that were completed in 2019. So they were completed in, like, July, July of 2019. And you should have the report, trying to be able to give copies of the report. So the most important pages are really the first seven. I would say that there's a table on page three. That should be the summary and largely what you would be concerned with. Alternative one and alternative two, so a quick understanding of what those are. Alternative one is leaving the roads in their exact current alignment and configuration and just rehabilitating the surface. And alternative two is a much more, what I would call, grandiose project. It would include a reduction of paving surfaces, what we call a road diet. It could include additional curving, sidewalks or pedestrian amenities, street lighting. And overall, it would be, you know, bring these roadways up to what you would consider a formal standard for a business park rather than just a simple industrial road. So there's a substantial delta between those two alternatives. And the goal is to get as much funding close to alternative number two as possible. And then right now, this report plus our request is in front of the Genesee Transportation Council. And the current goal is to request the Genesee Transportation Council to consider our project for federal funding as part of their transportation improvement program called the TIP. They advance that program every three years. We're looking to get on their list of potential projects. Hopefully, we can come to an agreement that if they approve of the project, we can kind of get a wink and a nod from them. And then at that point, we can progress with the potential dedication aspects. I think if you recall, there was a chicken and the egg, right? Villes shouldn't take dedication until they know there's funding to rehabilitate roads because it's too much risk. Now we're just trying to get through that chicken and the egg process. They can give us a wink and a nod, say that we like the project, then I think we can begin the process of moving forward and negotiating with Xerox to alleviate any risk on village of being stuck with roadways that are in torshaped, that they would then have to rehabilitate on their own, which is what none of us want. So the report is complete. The scope of work is complete by the consultants. Right now, we're just waiting on the Genesee Transportation Council for their feedback.
Nice.
They meet the 17th of March. So it could be, we might not hear until April if there's any true feedback. But that's, right now, we are in a waiting period.
We gotta wait to see what we get.
I know there's a lot of planned renovation for Mitchell Dean and San Jose. In terms of rehab going on Orchard Street in Panama, there's not quite as much. And there wouldn't be any touching of the main roads that connect Mitchell Dean and San Jose, right?
Mitchell Dean and Phillips Road or Salt Road, those are not included as part of this. Those are already, those are already public corridors, the county roads. They would already be eligible for federal assistance. At this time, this project doesn't contemplate any improvements to those roads other than maybe at the intersections where we would have what we call gateway improvements, things that would beautify it and make it a more appealing entrance into a formal business industrial park. The goal is to improve not only the function of these roadways, but their appeal such that it's an amenity that would attract private investment. That's 100% the goal here is to attract private investment to the park.
What street are you talking about?
So the streets, the streets that are being contemplated for dedication from private to public would be Orchard Street, Panama Street, Mitchell Dean, and San Jose.
It's not your end, though.
So everything north of Orchard Street?
There's two primary east-west corridors that traverse through the campus from Phillips to Salt. Those are Mitchell Dean and San Jose. Those are contemplated as part of this. And then Orchard. And then if you recall, when the town of Webster purchased the recreation complex, Toyota Drive was dedicated to the town. But there's Panama Street, which goes, which connects Orchard to Toyota. That's still private. So the goal would be to make that a public corridor, to make Panama a public corridor.
By private, you mean Xerox?
Yes, sir. It's owned by, Orchard Street in that location and Panama are private. They're owned by Xerox. Jake, did I miss anything?
Well, let's see how much money we get first before we talk to the board.
Yeah, well, we still have the 1.8 million from Empire State Development. The unfortunate thing is that was awarded back in 2019. At that time, it was 20% of the overall project cost. Today, it's only 18% of the project cost. The project cost has gone up about a million dollars just from general inflation in three years. So the cost to conduct the same amount of work based on our estimates has gone from about 9.2 million to 10.3 million.
That's going to keep going up, so.
And it's going to keep going up. So the quicker we can move the project forward, the more leverage we'll get out of the state assistance. And of course, at some point, the state assistance may no longer be there if they don't feel that we're moving forward with a viable project. So we're kind of closing in on, there's no hard and fast deadline just yet, but we're closing in on the window of opportunity. Thank you. It's a great details report. I wouldn't expect you to read it forward, but there's a lot of good detail in there. But like I said, the first seven pages of the document, up to page three, is really, you know, the primary summary. Any other questions, report?
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
I think that gives a clarification to the board in terms of what's on the scope of this project. All right, at this particular time, I would like to open the floor to public forum. And Bill, if this would be a time you would like to address again first, or if you would like to go later, that's up to you.
I'll go now. I gotta go home and take my nap. Once again, good evening to the board, the mayor, trustees, and to Jake. On Sunday, March 7th, a huge rally was held in front of the Webster Town Hall. I would estimate over 600 people were there waving mostly blue and yellow banners and small flags. But it was quite a compilation of American flags mixed in with it. They were asking, these were Ukrainian-Americans and Ukrainians who have not become Americans, asking for America to support, for support for Ukraine. A Ukrainian flag was presented to Supervisor Flery, which now is flying in tandem with the American flag on the town flight. There were many young people, smattering of elderly people, and a few politicians. In fact, I think the entire town board showed up, which is phenomenal because this rally really started at about 9:00 in the morning. A phone call was made, another phone call was made, and next thing you know, the green light was given and said, "Come on down." This is most remarkable today when you can't even start your car in six hours or something. You know, people can't get out of their own way. It was a phenomenal thing to see and be part of. And I stand before you saying that I am very proud of these people because I am one of them. I explained to you about three years ago about my mother coming from Ukraine in 1920, a young girl of eight years old, could speak no English. So I'm half Ukrainian, which puts me in good stead with the Ukrainian-American community of which I am a part. In fact, every Wednesday morning, we have breakfast down at the Bayfront Restaurant called the Ukrainian-American Men's Breakfast Club. And the last three weeks, the breakfast conversation has been quite lively, spirited. Right now, it's kind of sad. A lot of people don't know exactly what's happening or how it's going to end over there. We do know that we are all incensed and ask for the United States of America to issue condemnation on Russia for what's happened. And I think a watered-down version of that has come out this week after some of the atrocities have been foisted upon the Ukrainian people. At last, well, people in the Senate especially are speaking out, calling for violent ends to Putin, the leader of the Russian Federation. I feel a little bit sad that our proposal a few years ago for our so-called sister city in Ukraine in Ukraine evaporated because of COVID, because right now, that would be very meaningful for all of us to be able to communicate with that particular city and ask them if they needed any help, or it would just be a more personal thing to all of us. But they're still there, so they're in the western part, which right now, they're pretty much away from some of these bad things that are happening. Three years ago, a concert was held at Trader High School for a Ukrainian violinist student at the University, the Eastman School of Music, to raise funds for not only, his name is Kostya Lutnik, he was 19 years old then, but also for other good charities, the money raised went to all of them. Right now, Kostya is in an apartment in Kiev, the capital of Ukraine, and he cannot get out. I mean, he can get out of the apartment, but he can't get out of Ukraine, because anybody from 18 to 60 is not allowed to leave the country. Not that he wants to go anyways, but he went over there to be part of it all, and he's now shut up in an apartment because what's he gonna do? His main concern, other than the freedom of his people, is preserving his own physical gift of being able to play that violin the way he does. So for those of you who missed that concert, to me, if you love violin, it was a thrill of a lifetime to see somebody so gifted being able to do what he did, and he's, now he's improved three years beyond that, so you can imagine. I pray, I pray for him, and I pray for his safe return to America, because, to be frank, if he does go back and spends the rest of his life in Ukraine, not many people will hear about him or from him. Over here, he has a chance for the world to hear him, and what he has to say now, that he's 22 years old, and in his perfect English, by the way, telling about what we don't let him know about. Most of us can't even begin to imagine what they're suffering over there. Television is a wonderful thing, but it still puts us in the confines of our living room. We don't have to smell the smell of the bombs, or see the destruction of the buildings, or watch the people walking down the street with their heads down. It's, this is war. We haven't been in a real war like this in a long time. In fact, as far as I'm concerned, the last war we were in that was really, really ugly was Vietnam, and it was so bad that the population in this country rose up against it and said, "We don't want any more." For those who went to Iraq and Afghanistan, it was awful, it was terrible, no worse. Nobody wants more. But this war, this war between Russia and Ukraine is, it's not only ugly, it's fearful, because, I'll just speak out plainly, and if you want to censor me, go ahead, but I think Russia's being led around by a madman, and we can't have madmen leading countries in this nuclear age, because if it's gonna happen to them, whatever, we're only a stone's throw across the ocean, we're not too weak like we used to be or whatever. It's just a nightmare, a rotten nightmare.
I don't want to interrupt you in terms of what you have to say, Bill, but are you directing those comments to the board or just in general, because Billy should direct them to the board?
Okay. I can say I'm directing them to the board because I'm leading up to something. Government in the United States starts at this level right here, the village government. From here, we go uptown, whatever, and I'm asking this board to issue some sort of a resolution that condemns Russia for what they're doing to the Ukrainian people. I have not seen any municipal government in Monroe County do this so far, and we've got to start someplace. If you do it, and Penfield does, and Pittsburgh does it, and it goes to the county legislature, and they issue a condemnation of what Putin's doing, just think where it would lead to. But we can't sit around and wait for an ending. There won't be anybody left by the time somebody takes action. We are Americans, we should be so proud of what we have here and hold it dearly, and why wouldn't we let somebody else who wants a democracy enjoy those same freedoms? Right now, they are on the verge of having everything snatched away from them, and as difficult as it is to think about and contemplate, our place is to condemn this awful thing that's happening over there. I hope that our voices will reach the county legislature, and I'm working on that, to see if our county legislators are willing to speak out. But it really has to come from village government first, town government, because my one little voice is just gonna disappear in the snow that's going away. So I would implore you, beg you, to do such a thing. Nobody's gonna put you in jail, it's a voice of America that's being heard. Thank you for allowing me up here again. It's always a pleasure and a duty to come here where we enjoy the right to speak.
Thank you, Bill.
Anyone else looking to address the board? Okay, if not, I will close the public comment portion of the meeting, and we will now move into our scheduled agenda. Our first order of business is the approval of the minutes of February 24th. You have them in front of you. These cabinets. Any additions or corrections? Not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Lancy? Trustee Lowry?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Mr. Bagan is a resolution to approve the claims and warrants. I have asked Jake's a question and had them answered satisfactorily, so I don't have any particular.
Yeah, I asked Marc about probably Napa, I guess, I got my interest in.
I got one question, Jake. And it's, do your guys ask for your approval before they go and hit stuff, you know, like Napa or?
Depends on what we assign somebody to, you know, change oil in a vehicle and getting an oil filter, they run to the store and get an oil filter.
Just random stuff? Spark plug wrenches?
Yeah, that was for, there was a spark plug wrench that they got for the chainsaws, it's commonly a wrench, they have the chainsaws, there's some nuts that they got with that from Precision. You know, they're, I think they're always pretty, pretty good if they need something, you know, if they need something big, you know, above our procurement policy, certainly there's, 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 for incidental things, you know, it's, you know, completely that.
So there's not like a level of approval limits?
There are, basically, you know, through our procurement policy, you know, that there's, there's 400, you have to deal with 400, but we have, frankly, we start a lot less than that when, you know, somebody needs a little bit of something, you know, it's, hey, we've got, you know, they'll ask for me, I can't think of anything that's outstanding this time that would back me.
Hang on. I like that you can go ahead. I'll come next time, I'll talk to you later.
While you're looking at these, I just noticed it looks like there's something under twice, as far as the snow blower.
What page?
Page one. I didn't notice that before, but a threat and grant for an older adjustment, it's there, and down below, it's, seems like it's in two spots there, with $70 and $0.84. Oh, Joe just left, right? I don't know, we pull that out for the bills tomorrow.
Yeah, let's just, we can talk about that tomorrow, I'm not, because I don't, I don't do this.
Yeah, no, I mean, when the board approves that, I assume they're gonna prove it without that one, so we don't pay it twice.
Yeah.
But I just, I just saw that one there.
A rolling chair?
Yeah, no, it's a rolling chair that's a rolling stool for in the shop when they're doing, you know, flower edges or the edges of the flower, they're 40s, and it's, and believe me, I was very happy when I saw that, because I had to work on a snow blower not too long ago, and there would have been very nice to have when you were doing that. Well, you know, when I saw the guys got that, I'm like, yes, it was just before I needed it.
So just approve it with our, you know, the laws.
Anything else to add, Jake? And now, a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Lowry?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
I guess with the approval of the, one of the 784s.
Okay. Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
The next item is a resolution to update the terms of the zoning board members, and this would be an update to May 31st. So the terms of the current members, the ending, the term end dates would be as listed here for Mark Nicholson, it would be May 31, 2025, Mike O'Connor, May 31, 2026, Chris Krawitz, May 31, 2024, Kathy Bills, May 31, 2022, Peter Bowers, May 31, 2023, and Larry Hall, May 31, 2025, and Karen Windhorn, May 31, 2027. So this has been, so that the current term is ending all at the same time, and kind of been brought up to our current year ending. Okay, so this is a resolution in front of the trustees to approve the terms here for the current members, and I would also add that there's one other item that is not of that importance, and that would be Mark Nicholson's term as chairperson, that of course, is a yearly expiration, and that would expire on May 31, 2022. Oh, okay. All entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Lowry?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye. Next, we have in front of you a independent contractor agreement. This agreement would be with Lynn Barton as the independent contractor for the village, and this would be in her role as village historian. It's got out here, the engagement, the services to be performed, the performance of those tasks, and then a number of other things in terms of responsibility, work for hire, and severability. If there is no comment or objection, I would ask for a motion.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Trustee Lowry?
He's waiting on me.
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye. Would note that this agreement is a one-year contract from June 1st, 2021 through May 31, 2022, so it would be a yearly contract. Okay, and last, in terms of the business we have in front of the board, we have a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign an extension agreement to accept the restored East Main Street project number 131758. I believe that the problem that we have is that the current agreement will be or has run out, and it needs to be extended because the state has not yet approved, I think the monies. So this is an extension of the contract, which is for the East Main Street, which is 325, 350,000.
350,000. The monies have been approved, they're just auditing the request.
They're looking things over, that takes a while, the state to do that. So this is an extension of time to December 31, 2022. Looking for a motion to authorize me to sign this extension.
I can make that motion. Second it.
Trustee Lowry?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Thank you, Matt.
Yes, thank you, Matt.
It is to the board, as our attorney is not here tonight, enjoying work Tuesday, Sunday, Friday.
He's in Florida, what?
I have nothing.
You have nothing?
I do.
Well, I don't think Jake has seen.
No, he'll make no point.
Just normal, normal stuff, just SDP, just update you guys on some of the work they're doing down there, or regards to our SDP. We lined a, the Tierden Place Pipeline for a section of pipe from about 250, Webster Road, if you're familiar with where our sewer line runs off, looking at the maps or anything, it runs down to Parks and Rec, the town's Parks and Rec building, that cuts across over the softball field, and gathers up with another one, and then cuts across lots goes for our plant. We relined a section in there from about 250 over to the softball fields, and thought that there was gonna score away a lot of what we were, some of the issues that we had in that area, which we're relatively new, you know, we, in a recent, it's end of October, we had a heavy rainstorm, and there was actually a overflow in Man Hall, it was exceeding the capacity of the pipes, we ended up, one of the We ended up, one of the guys that agreed, we had to park a truck on the Man Hall to hold it down and allow it to back up because it was, you know, floating off. And it minimized a lot of, a lot of open escape. And then we went through right afterwards, found some areas of pipe that were, we had to do some work on, reline those. And then we went through, um, you know, we lined them, it was about eleven hundred feet. Thought we were doing pretty good. And then we had another storm that was less. We had another issue where it was filling up the tub. It didn't do the same thing, but it was filling up the tub. Never had an issue, you know, this line before this recently, so... Started to do some more investigation. I think the town, we worked with them on their rain line camera. So John came in, a couple of nights, when the flow was low, and looked at those lines. We found some roots. We had a company out today that was going through, cutting some of the roots on that pipe because it's, you know, as it goes between near Cherry Laurel, where it cuts across, it goes across lots and through the woods. So those lining projects are pretty important in some of those areas. As in old clay pipes, there's a lot of joints on them. Sure pipes, so they get roots in. So we're taking care of cleaning that stuff up. I think we're on a pretty, really good success. And I look to line that in a future, in a future day, so... But, you know, John's been really diligent with it and working some goofy hours sometimes because you gotta do the stuff when the flow is low.
I know. He's a good guy.
Yeah, tried a little bit. Now, he's, he's, he's definitely dedicated down there, and he's nice. Well, Matt just left, but I know we're working on getting that, the boa, they call it, that one grant that was awarded for the study or for the nomination on the Brownville Opportunity Area. And we reviewed some of that work today. We're looking to get that submitted into the state and then also formulate a split steering committee. We've had, well, we're, um, some things. And he's almost started, I think, started the process of employing folks to check on availability and interest in being on that committee. So that's coming up as well. Real quick, I think I mentioned it before. We want to make sure the ready grant that we've got in 2019, we've been waiting and waiting and waiting and waiting to do it. The town has been able to get the engineering done and turn in their hundred percent plans and waiting back for comment from the D E C. Because our, the town's sewer pump station down on Lake Earl near the sandbar was linked with our water well decommissioning project. Those two projects were linked together, and one part couldn't start without the other. Obviously, the decommissioning doesn't really take engineering. It's just, here's what you have to do, follow the rules, and you're done. The pump station took a lot of engineering. So they just got that squared away and submitted into the D E C. So hopefully, we're gonna hear soon and be able to get started. So if the D E C gives the approval on the go-ahead, I would suspect at this point we're not gonna have time to do it before the voting season. And obviously, our one of the neighbors that we're gonna rely on for work to, you know, it might end up being after Labor Day when we actually do it. But we'll be prepared to advertise a bid for that work. But that's been a few years since that was, since we got the vote for that. So that's, I don't know, with all the fuel costs and everything else, whatever they're gonna do. Well, I know what they're gonna do. They're gonna protect themselves and make sure that they're not losing money that was up. So, um, I think that's it. And then hopefully, we don't get as much known as they think we might get.
I was, I was gonna go to the St. James' Parade. Now you're tired of new, but no.
Couple inches would be all right. Yeah.
Well, it depends on what, when that line moves.
Yeah.
Getting in the double digits fast, I guess. But it's, thank you.
I would mention that we've been approached. Matt's trying to coordinate this with some college professors to come down to the well field and do some studies, possibly, at least to discuss the possibilities of using the wells to, um, be part of the studies on this that they're doing or classwork for the...
Thanks, Matt. Thanks, Matt. I'm ready for that.
Yeah, we'll discuss it. Anything further on it? But, um, that is something that was just brought... Jake, do you know any more about it?
I, I was, frankly, I was, I was included in the emails. I was a little surprised, but I thought it was a great idea, um, you know, for reaching out. We have a resource there, which will give benefit. It'd be great to, it'd be great to get a resolution to that and have, you know, put to use. You know, we were down there today working on the electric in the last couple of days. The electric went out. We had no one to fix it down there. There's costs associated with that. We have to have that, you know, up and running. But, you know, it's just, uh, and the gate, the gate down there hasn't worked in probably six or eight months. And we're working with, it's an old system. I'm gonna call one more that helped fix the gate down at the plant, down at this SDP. But frankly, I'm not in a big hurry. One estimate we had was in the thousands. I'm not, I can get out of the truck, open the gate by hand. I'm not in a big hurry to fix it so it's more convenient for other entities. If they want to make it more convenient for themselves, they can, but not in our taxpayers', you know. So, you know, it's unfortunate. I don't want to, certainly, I'd like to work together and appreciate everybody, but there's this time when you're like, what's, what's the benefits to our taxpayers? And if there's, if it's just, I don't have to get out of the truck, well, I'll save the taxpayers, and I'll get out of the truck, so...
Speaking of the well field, we may have a buyer for that wood.
Um, good night.
It's a whole thing. It's, it's not gonna be just pieces of wood.
I agree.
Whole thing goes.
Saw something, the, what did I see? An email the other day that came across that they were talking about possibility of rebuilding. And if that's Matt, something that Matt had, there's an opportunity thing that he had emailed about a, almost like a cultural center or an educational center with, something to do with the, with the rails and, and...
What?
Um, I forgot exactly what it was that he submitted. It was an email. I said, and I thought I had heard that the wood might go. And I'm like, oh, they're talking about using it and selling it.
The guy's really interested.
I would vote for selling it.
Yeah, absolutely.
We can, you can make wood look old later on.
There you go.
He's, you know, not made an offer yet. He lives up near Buffalo. And I've talked to him several times.
Did you request?
He wanted to, um, come up here and see the wood. And I just said, if you're gonna buy this, it's all gone. They're not gonna leave the dead stuff behind. Take the middle thing, so... He is an intro, he's, he's a very interesting guy. Lives in Clarence.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I...
Shelley, his name is Kelly.
There used to be a place, Hollywood Harry's in Clarence, that would dismantle old barns and old buildings.
I think he owns it.
Yeah.
Well, the man's, okay.
And, uh, he, he's interested in selling the wood, probably piece by piece, because it's prime artistic kind of stuff. I got in touch with the Webster, friends of Webster Trails, and I, uh, I thought that maybe I could plan to have a replica of the depot over one of the creeks. And I forgot the lady's name. Anne sent down the, that interest. Which would've been really neat. It would've been neat if they could've built a smaller one. You know, maybe fourteen feet by, you know, seven, eight feet wide. And I don't think it would take an awful lot of engineering and planning to put something like that together. She said no. So, I, I, and if we do sell the wood, the money would go to Friends of Historic Preservation League. Peter's group. Didn't that hurt back?
Yeah, I don't know.
Because they own the wood. They always back rent though.
I was just gonna say.
They've been down there a while. Six years. So, and it's still, I'm really, you know, last time I was there, it's still dry, some of the big, big logs.
Yeah.
You know, they, those big logs have been there for, you know, almost two hundred years, so they're, they're...
All right. Next meeting is workshop. It'll be on March 15th at six o'clock. That is next Tuesday. And our next village board meeting will be on the 24th of March.
Maybe. Right? Turn on the...
So at this particular fine time, I would entertain a motion to close the meeting.
I just wanted to say a quick...
Nobody else has...
I just wanted a quick thank you to Marcia for that budget planning. That was absolutely terrific.
With that, and so, the report was good, too. The audit.
Uh, believe that next meeting, there will be a report by the auditors here at the board. And we give our budget workshop. We'll finish up, hopefully. All right? So I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Thank you for coming. And we wish to see you maybe next Tuesday or in two weeks.